They use that one.
Call the work session to order, and I don't have an agenda in front of me. I'm going to steal the American plan stuff like that. Let's see what we need to do. Okay, I think just for this, I think if I remember correctly, I just have to say that we are in a works study or work session, and that the purpose of it is to review the housing survey. And we're going to be led through that by our economic development director, Ken Brooks. So I will turn it over again.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate the work session. As you know, I have the privilege of serving as the executive director of We Lead, and in that capacity, I was asked to serve on the steering committee for the Muscatine County Housing Council. About three years ago, that Housing Council contracted with an organization called Atlas to conduct a housing study that encompasses all of Muscatine County, focusing on the county's whole as well as three submarkets, being the city of Muscatine, the city of Wilton, and the city of West Liberty, Iowa. So the meat and potatoes of that survey was conducted in Q3 and Q4 of 2023, and then released first quarter of 2024. So that's what I provided to you a couple of months ago when it came out via email, and then the city clerk included that in the papers for this evening. So I hope you've had a tiny review of that, so we don't have to go line by line through it. But there's some really important data that I wanted to highlight, and I guess foster some discussion with council tonight on that, as it should be one of the principal documents that guides us moving forward as we discuss strategy for housing. So to talk a little bit about the study itself, the Muscatine County Housing Study was commissioned to analyze the current housing market to identify challenges and opportunities, and to provide actionable recommendations to improve housing across the county. Tonight, we'll be discussing specifically West Liberty. So the current housing market analysis, my favorite graph, if there's one set of data that you're going to look at in this entire thing, you're going to find it on page eighteen. I don't know if it's really page eighteen, it's labeled page eighteen in the housing study. It's figure two decimal two.
It is.
Thank you. And this is the available, what they call affordable units. That's kind of a misleading title. This is a snapshot of all of the housing within the city limits. You see on the left side of the chart there, owner occupied units, and then on the right side of the chart is renter occupied units. And they have it broken down by income range of the family that lives in that unit. So we're looking at total household income for this, this data right here. So if you have a single person household, it's their incoming account or four. If you have a married couple or an unmarried couple, it's both of theirs. If you have a multi-generational household, all members that are living in there that are earning an income or receiving benefits are calculated in that total. The really interesting number is that column on the far right that says balance. So you've got your total units there, which is a combination of your owner occupied and your rental units. And then the balance. So at first glance, looking at houses, if you were to buy them, starting at $300,000 and higher, you can see we have a significant deficit of those. If you look at the first two lines for homes valued under $100,000 and under $150,000, it looks like we have a surplus of those homes. But we don't actually, and this is an important point that we kind of touched on a couple of weeks ago at the business meeting, but I wanted to illustrate here. We should have a surplus of these homes if everybody was living in an appropriately sized or priced house for their income level. What the data shows us is that because we have such a scarcity of homes, people are taking whatever kind of home they can get into. So a family that makes an excess of our highest line item here, $150,000 a year combined income for the family, should be able to afford a house $500,000 in value or more. We don't have very many of those homes. So those families are buying the house that costs perhaps $300,000 or $200,000 and living under their means. When that happens, that then removes that possibility for a family who can afford that kind of on the upper end. And so they're forced, instead of a $300,000 home, live in a $200,000 home. Families like them in the $200,000 home or in $100,000 homes, and those at the lowest end of our socioeconomic scale are finding it very difficult to find housing in West Liberty. So we can save an hour of discussion here and cut straight to the point. I like to do that. We need to be building homes on the very low end, not in quality, but in cost, and on the very upper end. We need to be hitting both sides of those, and then everything in the middle will sort itself out over time.
I find more frequently that I'm noticing many single family homes turning into rentals as well. But every time I pull up Facebook, I notice other ones being rented out.
So the data shows us that after the 2008 housing market crash, when people were evicted from their homes due to non-payment, or they downsized, they couldn't afford payment because balloon payments, many of those homes were sold to investors who then converted them into rental properties. So we saw a huge uptick in what had been single family homes converted to rentals in the late 2000s and early 2010s. So it definitely, it's not necessarily a problem. It is what it is. That's the situation to deal with. Again, we're, I think, all acutely aware how low our vacancy rates are and all of that data. It is in here. West Liberty has a very tight housing market, tightest that of any of the community surveys in Muscatine County. And Muscatine County has a very tight housing market. If you turn to the next page, I'm going to go ahead and kind of read this a little bit. I think this is important. According to figure two-two on the previous page, there's a clear surplus among the lower priced units and a deficit among the higher priced units we talked about. It's important to note that this is one piece to the larger, more complex housing puzzle. Just here's the lower, you know, does that not mean that the supply is truly meeting demand?
It sounds like it.
The engagement phase highlights that a larger barrier for homeowners and renters across the board is quality. Both homeowners and renters express concern about the quality of lower priced units, noting that significant updates and renovations are needed for these units in order to meet modern expectations. Homeowners don't necessarily have or want to spend the funds to support these types of renovations, while renters can find more modern units in surrounding counties, Regent County, for slightly higher price points. Overall, lower income homeowners and renters are struggling the most to find, obtain, and maintain truly affordable housing in West Liberty. However, there's still demand across all incomes despite high level of benefits. So we need housing at every level, right? The demand is extreme, but the recommendation is that we focus lower in the higher, even though it looks like we have a surplus of the lower, we don't. And what we do have, we need to invest in. And we need to encourage that investment, so we can get around to some suggestions on how to do that.
I feel like since I like to add that West Liberty has a big lot of rental properties, how many, we need to also figure out how many families can actually work and take up the vendor space because they like to live in that comfort and not have the actual monthly mortgage payment. So I think that also would be considered, I think we could free up a lot of space by actually exploring like what the incomes are and what they can afford, what we can leave for people to actually need their low rents here. Yeah, put them in, in a space that they can afford their limited income. I mean, it is, it is a lot of work to be done, but like Ken said, we, we work on the lower end and also, you know, go on up here to put people where they want to be.
I agree, and I want to take a quick moment just to, and I don't want to interrupt, so we can keep going. I just want to address also council memberships. What the city sees, and again, in conversations with realtors, what occurs is that when a single family home opens, whether it be an elderly estate opening, or just a family that, you know, maybe has an opportunity when they're moving out of town or they're moving to another home, a lot of these homes don't even make it to a realtor. A lot of homes are, you know, being sold privately, not necessarily always going through realtors. And what happens there too is that a lot of investors are the ones who, you know, get the information and get there before, you know, a family has an opportunity to purchase the home. I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I'm just saying also because it's not linking it to a market, to a real estate market, it eliminates that opportunity to open that home up to a single family. And I think there, I think there's some things that can be, can be done about that as well, so.
Again, it's not necessarily a problem. It just is what it is, right? We're happy to see investors making money in the process. I think as a community, we owe it to one another to make sure that we don't have people being taken advantage in that process. But making money is not a bad thing, and business is a good opportunity. I think the way to level that playing field is by increasing the housing stock. Yes. Right? So we'll be, we'll be addressing that. Want to touch briefly on population and demographics. There were a couple big key indicators that I spoke about at the We Lead angle meeting. In the last two decades, population has grown 15% in West Liberty. And that's with our own announcement.
I'm going back to this table you had for the affordable housing in the 500 plus range.
Yes.
They say that, you know, we don't have enough of.
Right.
And that's what current interest rates and inflation, all that rolled into this?
Yes.
Because it looks like to me that's still hanging out there, and as far as we have had some $500,000 houses in this not city, but I'm just going outside, they have came down in price like a lot in the last, they're still not sold.
Yeah.
Actually, you probably know which ones I'm talking about.
Yes.
So we're going back, and I totally agree that we're lacking in the 150 and on up and that mid-range stuff like that, but I was just kind of curious of how these numbers got, you know, like populated. Because I'm thinking still, that seems out of range, so even an income of 150,000.
So we can take a look at that here in a minute. I've got that on list to touch on, but let me address the larger point there. This data was updated at the beginning of 2024 using those interest rates, which were actually slightly higher than the Okay. We're in a slightly better position than what some of this data here is saying. One of the largest obstacles that we've come across in this entire process has to do with expectations in what people believe the market should be versus what the market is actually bearing. So there's a huge discrepancy between renters that completed this survey and homeowners completed the survey on what they think an appropriate monthly mortgage payment should cost to the tune of two to three times different. With people currently renting, thinking that a mortgage should cost under $800. I mean, there was a lot of that, right? And so education is going to be a huge piece of this, right? It generally is better for everybody. It's better for business, for industry, and for developing the community to encourage homeownership, right? There is a part that comes with that, and it is more expensive upfront. But as you know, it's an investment that you recoup over time compared to renting where you don't see a return on that investment. Once you put that rent check in, then that money's gone. So managing expectations and beliefs is going to be a very important part of what our strategy should be for. And that's the very last point we'll talk about. We talked about the 15% growth. This is even more impressive. In the last 20 years, we've seen the median household income double in the city of West Liberty. That is huge. And that's all since this data.
And the lowest poverty rate in the, in the county.
And also the youngest, West Liberty is the youngest community as far as median age goes to. Any other question on demographics? You're interested. Page eight has a pretty good breakdown on population by race and ethnicity. Nine's got, I mean, demographic. H10 has education. You've got your poverty rates explained on page 11. Labor force participation, you have very low unemployment rate.
We, we don't think that it's the study of overcrowding for folks.
They addressed the fact that household size in West Liberty is significantly larger than the other community survey and larger than state and national averages. The researchers attributed that to cultural diversity and how much of our Hispanic and Latino community chooses to build multi-generational households, which is not necessarily consistent with other cultures. So they're saying statistically, there's a higher percentage of that. And when it comes to recommendations.
I don't, I don't believe that during their, during this study, they addressed overcrowding and rental property due to affordability. I don't think that 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 was, it was more under household ownership with multi-generational.
They do identify that there is a want and a need for multi-generational housing. And we can discuss it now. One of their recommendations is that at all levels of building that we incorporate plans that would facilitate that happen. So even in, say, an apartment type setting, build larger apartments with more bedrooms geared towards larger families that share common living areas. Or if you were looking at a pocket neighborhood, which is where you have smaller homes built on smaller lots that all back up or into a shared green space. I say green space, it could be a vegetable garden, it could be a gazebo, it could be a barbecue, it could be a playground, right? So it looks like you've got a great big backyard, but it's not actually yours. It's all in your neighbors, right? We're seeing more and more of that happen in, you know, communities this size.
So we need homes, and we have these developments out there. We've already got, I know of two or three, and I don't see them taking them up as well, maybe we think, or maybe you have more background than that.
Which development?
Well, the one down by the cemetery that Brad Aker put in, we talked to him, or and them were the one demographic that we're probably lacking in too, them with the lower end.
Yes.
And I just want to know if they're having more bikes on those.
Did you understand that there wasn't demand for them?
No. Well, it did seem like that, that I had not realized. I hadn't been driving down lately, and I thought it's something of that nature would probably fill up pretty fast, because them are the, I mean, the ones that maybe people are going to buy on first.
Yeah.
Then the ones out north of town that are maybe going to be a little bit higher end. But I just wondered how they was going, because you're talking about needing houses and stuff, so.
My understanding with the Meadows complex, he's got, I think, five units out there.
Yeah.
Right now, four or five, and as soon as they were up and he made them available, they were sold.
Okay.
He's looking at a different distributor for the next round, is my understanding. And he's got people that are, that are very interested in those. Good. So I think that's successful, and that's certainly meeting a need. One of the challenges with manufactured homes is it's difficult to secure traditional financing on them because they depreciate at a different rate than a sticked out home does.
And that's the difference between the two projects, is that, or you're just saying that in general?
So the Meadows is all manufactured homes.
Okay.
What used to be referred to as low homes.
Right.
And so most lenders will not do a traditional mortgage.
Right.
On that type of home.
And difficulty with insurance also.
Very well could be.
I do know that Mr. Akers was able to establish, I mean, it was that, just as Ken is communicating, that he's been able to establish the funding piece of it and, and, and find that the funding, because prior to that, I mean, just as Ken's saying, some of them, our local banks don't fund, they don't do a mortgage on a manufactured home. But that was, Brad also identified, you know, the, the financing for the homes as well. Along with that, I think part of the scare recently, if you've seen in the news, we have a lot of mobile home, modular home parks that have been purchased and having their lot rent double. And so again, Mr. Akers took a very progressive step to, you know, lock in a rate so to, to lessen that scare of what's happening across, you know, the nation or within our own state. And I know legislation is trying to work on, you know, putting a stop to that, but that, at the time he was opening that, that's when that was really taking loose where private investors were purchasing and then doubling rents. Yeah.
Now, back to the conversation between you two. One of the things in the study is it suggested creativity is that we need to be very creative on the different types of housing opportunities we provide.
Yes. And we're in a good position where literally we have a market for everything, right?
Yeah.
So it's not that we need to be extremely selective. We've got developers that are excited about a certain project. I think the market will bear whatever they do. But when it comes time for council to create its own initiatives, I think we can be targeted in, in our approach there. We talked a little bit about housing affordability. Another key indicator here, we have a lot of families in town that are defined as housing burdened. The way that is defined is spending greater than 30% of your income on housing costs. The gap continues to widen. And the number that they used to use for housing costs was your mortgage or your rent payment, right? But we know it's a little bit complicated than that. And in the economy in 2024, it is even more complicated than it used to be. Page 20 is a blue page in here, and it talks about an affordability threshold and why things might be different than you might think. The median household income in West Liberty is $63,910, which comes down to $4,916 a month gross of brief taxes come out. If you use a 30% threshold of that, that means that family making $64,000 should be able to afford a $1,600 a month housing payment. So that's where that's coming. However, when you factor in taxes and benefits, and you could even go as far as factor in student loans and other recurring expenses, you're $4,916 a month minus taxes and benefits, all of a sudden you're down to $3,436 a month. Which is significantly lower than that $4,916, right? So we just need to be very sensitive that the 30% rule, even though it's an industry standard, what is that 30% of to something that we need to prepare? Where are we at right now as far as what we have existing? So before I take a dive into that, I guess I would pose a question to you. Personally, what are, what are your opinions on West Liberty's housing stock?
Nothing. Yeah, I mean, I look at it quite a bit just because I'm interested in that stuff. Very rarely there's more than four or five houses for sale at one time.
Even if they're not for sale, what is the condition of the homes in town?
They're very old and ancient. I think instead of like, I thought about beautifying hotels and getting grants. As long as we want to build, sure, if we want to stay at that, we'll have the money to leave that homes. We want to beautify that.
Do you have any other input?
Well, and I just, from my side of it, is we, with our, our inventory also includes, so I'll go back to, to the investments and you know, we have single family homes that have been split into, you know, duplexes and, you know, square footage wise, I mean, that wouldn't fit what a new duplex, you know, square footage would be. And so, but then the cost for those spaces are equal to what it costs for a new duplex or even a, you know, house payments. And so, so we have a very mixed inventory. And we don't necessarily always have inventory being properly sized for the square footage.
Yeah.
And so I think then that, I think that's going to come up in our discussion as we go along is some opportunities for us to, to correct those things too.
The first time that my brother visited West Liberty, he said, man, there's a lot of beautiful old homes in this town, which there are. I don't know if the definition of housing burden covers all of the things, but I think that we have a number of people raised their family and home at the need for that kind of space and now are trying to pay for the heating of that facility, the taxes on it and trying to keep it up. And I think that there's some benefit to the types of things that Omar was talking about, about with rehabilitation. And I've mentioned before, having recently tried to do, learned a little bit about updating electricity in a building, that the changes in breakers, the whole system of electricity, getting that even more safe makes me shudder about the age of some of the electrical systems that we have in these homes.
And it makes it worse when you're a family of limited means.
Yes.
That it shows that in that lowest income bracket, 95% of those households are housing burdened. What I'm going to say next, I'm speaking generally and should not be interpreted that I'm talking about any specific property or property owner. Because West Liberty's rental market, housing market in general, but specifically rental market is so tight, there are few incentives for landlords to make property improvements on their rental properties because they're going to be filled whether they're approved or not, right? I think that is another issue that you can plainly see just walking around.
Would these be things that would kind of pop up and say like an inspection of a property? Because I know we've been working with our nuisance officer to get him kind of geared up to go through and check some of those things out as well.
I think it certainly helps. There's definitely low hanging fruit. Purpose of the nuisance ordinances are safety, right? We certainly want to make sure folks are living in a minimally safe environment. But there's a difference between minimally safe and that next level of basic improvement, right? But there's a difference between minimally safe and that next level of basic improvement, right? Yeah.
And allow, I'm sorry, allowance for existing um things like electrical, as long as it's safe, uh but not maybe up to the current standards.
So it's difficult too for a homeowner that's wanting to make um improvements in their home, because once you start making improvements, code doesn't necessarily allow for what had been grandfathered in to continue to be grandfathered in. We have a local business owner that wanted to make some improvements to his property, but if he was going to pursue that, he was going to also have to upgrade the electric uh internals in that process, so that took it, um, trying to recall numbers here, but from a five thousand dollar project to a forty thousand dollar project.
And again, when you have a hundred year old home and you created a a duplex unit or a multiple unit out of it, then again, upgrades can need to um firewall, you know,
Yeah.
um, that you would have in a new build, um, but when you have a hundred year old home and you're going to go in and renovate it up to code, then um even with City Hall as an example, um, our square footage didn't change. However, with code and bringing it to code actually shrink our square footage for space that could be utilized, so
Yeah.
I put that in the mind of when we do have older homes that have already been duplexed or separated, then likewise then they, that that happens too, but as we're talking though, maybe then that is a time or an opportunity, then you can, uh, the owner would consider turning it back into a single family home. If we have a place to house, you know, the current families are in that home, so.
I like it when we have data to support, hello, have data to support um initiatives that we wanted to to do anyway. Um, city manager Gertz and I have been talking for some time now about what a residential program would look like through tax increment finance um to help do some of these restorative home improvements and other occupied housing, right? We've got this amazing uh program for businesses and improving them, and I would like to see that continued, I'd like to see that program renewed, but using a similar approach, use of matching funds um to help homeowners in the homes.
I think nationally, there is like grants available, we just gotta be, they do a little bit for just the kind of the way people watch about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure there's ways for everybody to really pursue, do what they do, whatever.
We do have work to do, the good news is, um, compared to Muscatine, uh, we're actually doing great as far as housing stock goes. Um, if you look on page thirty eight, there's a beautiful colored little map there that um has kind of the condition of the homes and and generally, we're doing pretty good. We've got a couple of properties out here that they've identified that need some work, but generally, we're doing pretty good. So, always want to report the good news when we have good news.
As an owner of a home that's over a hundred and thirty years old, I can absolutely relate to the necessity of upgrades. It's in ninety seven, when we purchased it, it was run on electrical knob and two, which by today is very scary. So, uh, it just, you know, a lot of things fall through the cracks. So I think by making sure that there is a very clear policy uh to be made in order to make sure that the safety of the citizens are the first priority and to make sure that landlords maintain that upkeep and homeowners are able to make those renovations that they need to um with with assistance, um, is only going to, you know, be a great opportunity for West Liberty.
Yeah.
I mean, we see the success, I mean, again, in the downtown district, you know, we're dealing with a hundred year old buildings. And we've we've got firsthand, you know, eyes on success that's occurred down there with the commercial space and then creating that residential space above that commercial space and being done in code and um, you know, and and moving forward. So just as Ken has stated, I mean, that has been our ongoing discussion now to move that from the downtown and, you know, work with homeowners um to, you know, come up with a program where we can, you know, look at assisting them and to, you know, making those, because I think we would probably, uh, I think there would be a great, um, it might not be even a surprise, but uh I would imagine we still have quite a few homes out there that are under old electrical. And again, we have third generation ownership in homes. So, um, when your ownership is, you know, passed down from family to family, you know, then there's a lot of things that don't change in the home. Um, because it's doing, it's an internal, you know, transfer in your family, so it doesn't go through an inspection, you know, for mortgage or any of that, so.
Yes, yeah, case in point, um, when my grandfather built their home here in town uh on Short Street, he and a group of people that he knew, friends, they built it, there was no builder or contractor like there is today, and that would have been in the fifties
Mm-hmm.
or sixties. And so, they did what they thought was correct, fast forward to today, where um the family still owns it. You know, if they do anything else or sell it,
Right.
you know, they have to meet those upgrades because
Yep.
God knows what kind of electrical, you know.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, yeah, because you're dealing with, you know, homes even that are from the fifties and sixties that, you know, still um are being sold and sold and sold, and then they don't go through those upgrades.
Yeah. Well, and again, I mean, that's why you're, that's why financial institutions, that's why your mortgage companies, you know, um, require those inspections, you know, require the home owner, the purchaser to, you know, but at the same time, there's not necessarily always a requirement to bring it up to code to purchase it. It's just, here's the report, now you know what you're getting into. And then it just goes on from there, so.
And and it doesn't solve the problem to your point, when homes are being deeded and not sold.
Right.
I I was surprised to learn that more than forty percent of owner occupied homes in West Liberty do not carry a mortgage.
That's very interesting.
Forty percent, more than forty percent.
Yeah, and that's that generational.
Exactly.
And then handed down, yeah.
So we've talked a lot about some of the overlaying issues, right? Um, the study did identify three challenges that we're going to face as we work to address these issues. The good news is, you are equipped to take care of all three of those issues. Uh, the first one is uh limited availability for land to build new maps, right? Um, good news, there is, um, you know, as you've seen from recent projects, recent development projects, we have landowners that are willing to sell land to be developed on. Um, and I think there are more opportunities out there. We council can help with that moving forward, um, is to continue leveraging tax burden relief um as we have with some of these other projects to incentivize that. Uh, so nothing new there, just keep doing what you're doing. The second is infrastructure deficiencies. As we continue to both expand out and improve what we have in, we're going to need more utility work done, and that's going to cost money. That's something to pay attention to. And then the last one is regulatory barriers. We have fewer of those here uh than Muscatine and Wilton do. Uh, we were all kind of shocked to learn that the city of Wilton does not actually have a building code.
Uh-uh, no.
Which provides more trouble than you would think. So, uh, we do have a good building code, um, but as we'll talk about in a minute, there are some things that, um, especially when it comes to zoning and things, we want to start having conversations about, because what has worked or maybe hasn't worked for the last hundred years might need tweaking more. Opportunities for improvement. West Liberty doesn't have a whole lot of undeveloped sites in town. Um, the city has control of one lot um that the city got after a house fire years ago, and that's currently earmarked for a community building project with Habitat for Humanity, which is great. Um, we're expecting that to to happen next year. Um, most of the other undeveloped or undeveloped lots are privately owned and they're next to single family homes, so people that came in and bought two lots or had a very large lot and divided and sold some, but kept others. So those stay on the books as undeveloped property. Um, but those property owners are are holding on to them and that's their prerogative. Um, eventually, the market's going to get to a point where that land's going to be valuable enough that they're going to sell it or not, right? That's that's going to be up to them. Um, the city doesn't really have a a whole lot of say in that, and that's okay. Um, but definitely something to to talk about. Um, collaboration between public and private sectors is something that the study recommended that we continue pursuing. Um, whatever we can do to foster positive environment for folks to develop housing in West Liberty is something that we want to do. So if that means the city needs to start looking a little bit closer, not that we don't already work closely with our local banks, but we go out and we start working on some programs together, maybe that's what we need to do. If it's, uh, the city takes a step and um starts working closely with the Community Foundation of Greater Muscatine, right? They're the ones that are kind of spearheading the the Housing Council. Perhaps there's an opportunity there. Um, one of the opportunities that we may have is something that through the Housing Council we're working on. It's called a pattern book, and this was a specific thing that the study recommended that we look into. The idea of a pattern book is that uh architects draw up plans that would fit on specific lot sizes. And those plans would meet the codes and be approved in every municipality in Muscatine County. So that if you're interested on building a lot in the middle of the city, you look up and see what size it is, you don't have to go pay an architect to design plans, you can pull out the pattern book, you can see here are four options, pick what one you like best, know that it's approved, and know that you've got these contractors in the county that are willing to come and build that for you. Um, city of Muscatine has already approved that uh to do in the city of Muscatine, and they're picking up the cost for that. Um, we may come back to council and ask for a little bit of funding to help um with lot sizes that the city of West Liberty has, that the city of Muscatine does not have. Uh, I think it's a couple thousand dollars per plan um that is in this book that goes to the architects and engineers to to cover their expenses, so. When we have that information, we'll bring that back towards you. But that's one example of a kind of partnership that would help foster that.
I just have to add, when this came up during the presentation, um, some of you are definitely too young to know this. But automatically, my thoughts went to um the Sears catalog of picking out your home and ordering it and, um, but at the same time, I mean, that is essentially that you're pre approving a design and it allows, you know, the um, you know, oh, an opportunity to look at smaller lot sizes, you know, things that I know Ken's going to keep talking about, um, but, yeah, it 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 provides a pattern already for folks to because, I mean, I don't, I have a hard enough time picking out curtains and carpet, let alone the design of a home, but this at least allows them an opportunity to visually see something and 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 place it with a lot that's going to fit to that.
It's interesting, you, I don't, I always dreamed about building my home and designing it and all this, and and maybe that's not everybody, right? I never had that opportunity, but that has always been kind of the cream of crop option. Um, but apparently, that is not what the majority of people want to do. Speaking with developers and speaking with large developers that build housing developments all day, every day, they say that their show houses, their model homes are the first to go, and people want to buy those before they want to choose one and have something built. I thought that was interesting, a little bit of insight there.
Those are commonly referred to as spec homes.
Yeah, yeah, super interesting. So the study recommends some short term actions and some long term actions. We've already covered a lot of these just in discussion. Um, focus on increasing the stability of affordable homes through both new construction and through uh promoting the rehabilitation programs in the existing homes. Uh, work towards providing incentives for homeowners to maintain and upgrade their properties. Um, and then also encourage landlords um to make sure they're providing a quality product to um to their customers. So I'm excited to see where this inspection program goes, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Um, page forty four has some interesting numbers. West Liberty loses and gains about the same amount of commuters every day. So for every person that goes into Iowa City, Muscatine, or the Quad Cities to work, somebody from Iowa City, Muscatine, or the Quad Cities comes here to work. Think about where we can be if we can keep our own citizens working here in town, right? Think about where we could be if we could have housing for those thousands of people that come to work in West Liberty. So, this graph on page forty four shows you the top occupations for commuters coming to work in West Liberty, those that work here that do not live here. So, production, education, science, installation, mechanic repair, and general business. The researchers made phone calls to the largest companies in town, and they talked about what kind of jobs commuters are doing and where they fall on the salary chart. And there's a note in here that talks about it. Um, but the majority of the commuters are falling under that entry level salary column. So if you look at that entry level salary column, and then you follow that over to the paper surface or your monthly rental price, it's showing us that the majority of the people that are coming into town to work that don't live here should be looking to buy a home under one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do you know how many homes are for sale in West Liberty under one hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Are there any? Zero. Do you know how many homes have been for sale under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last two years?
One.
Maybe two? Do you know what a Costa Ville, three bedroom, two bathroom home, brand new, in West Liberty right now? Three hundred thousand, or three hundred and seventy five, maybe? Purchase price, right? So we've got a gap. So how do we close that gap? Talked about tax relief, right? That's a tool that city council has to encourage development to lower the overall cost there. Um, what we haven't talked about is partnering with nonprofit organizations. Um, we have a wonderful nonprofit organization in town that provides subsidized housing um to low income and um disabled residents. So that we can continue to look at how can we best support that nonprofit organization doing that work. Um, there are a lot of different avenues that we can pursue when it comes to subsidizing the cost of housing without talking about scary things like Section Eight, right? It's always a big red flag when it comes to government housing development and things, but I'm just telling you, there are other options or other avenues to consider. But when this data is showing that all these people that are coming to town, many of which would like to live here but don't have an option, need a home where they can rent for under a thousand dollars a month or buy a house for under a hundred and fifty, under a hundred thousand dollars, we're going to have to start thinking outside the box. Long term strategies for long term success, we need to develop comprehensive housing plan. Um, you know, we're working on a comprehensive plan and and updating that, so that can definitely cover that. Evidence for zoning and policy reforms. There's a gentleman that approached the city a couple of months ago, he'd like to build a tiny home here in town. There are a lot of reasons why he can't do that, right, and most of them have to do the zoning. And that's why he hasn't been able to find a place, you know, within a couple hours. And that's why he hasn't been able to find a place, you know, within a couple hours for him to build that tiny home. And I'm not specifically advocating for that, but there's some outside the box thinking. What can we do to encourage um some smaller home or right size home development? And maybe that means we're gonna have to start tweaking lot sizes. Can we do that safely with modern building materials? I think the answer is yes, but we need to, we need to look at that and see how do we respond to that. Yes. We're kind of good at that.
We're new, yeah, we're known for that, right?
Uh, the last point I wanted to make, kind of the last piece of this plan is community engagement and education. We talked about what these kind of preconceived notions people have about homeownership and and about the community. All you have to do is get on Facebook for about ten minutes and you can see folks have a lot of preconceived notions about a lot of things and how they should be and why why they are. Um, so it's gonna be very important that, just like with everything else, the city amps up its communication plan. Um, as council starts to focus on housing and start pushing out good quality material to the community. We want to encourage discussion and we want to encourage. Not only homeowners to take advantage of programs that council is going to offer and developers to take advantage of. Programs that council is going to offer, but to collaborate with one another to to truly improve the community as a team effort. And then my very, my very final note before I answer whatever questions that you may have. The study is focusing on issues that we have, right? I've said problem a couple of times, but try to remember to say the word issue. We are in a good position to have these problems and these issues. This community is a wonderful place to live, to work, to study, to play, which is why the housing market is so tight. It's a very desirable community to live in because of the wonderful folks that we have here. So I just want to thank all of you for your hard work and making West Liberty such an awesome place to live and work. Um, and I can answer whatever questions you have.
Questions for Ken? I think we've kind of asked them as we went along, so.
There's a whole lot of data. Feel free to reach out. Let's set up a a time to talk one on one or two on one, whatever you'd like to do. Um, the first fifty or sixty pages of this is the study, and then there's an another hundred and fifty pages that you've been provided that's community input. Um, and that is organized a couple of different ways, including by community. We'll give you all three because I think. The input that was provided is really interesting across the whole county. So I know you haven't likely had a chance to take a deep dive into all that community input stuff, but, you know. Um, if you've got some time on your hands later, you should give it clues.
And just um for Ken and myself, so again, we meet on a weekly basis. We meet every Friday. Um, we go over um projects. And so for council, I mean, out of the information that you've heard tonight, um, think about that and. And I would, I would ask that you identify of these things, whether rental, homeownership, um, zoning. Um, let us know because then what Ken and I can do is we can prioritize our meetings and our discussions and identify. You know, um, focusing on, we we've already started, I can tell you right now, as Ken has also communicated. Uh, we're talking about um rentals and landlords, um, looking at um programs. Um, one to educate, we have a lot of investors um that buy a home and now you're a landlord. What does that mean? You know, so again, I mean, we we can, you know, look at creating, um, maybe even a board. Uh, with landlords and education and then providing those resources that we have in. And then the other thing is, is also the resources for tenants. Because, you know, there's a lot of things that tenants, you know. You know, they've been living in situations that are not safe, but don't always know if they say something, then maybe they will have a home to live in. Um, then also included with that would be. Um, the uh. You know, the over. You know, how do I say that, you know, having multiple families overcrowding in a two bedroom home. Um, the safety, but also, and again, another situation is where else do they have to go?
Yeah, so.
Figure out overcrowded, but if they've hit a lot of points and like Ken said, we're in a.
Welcome, councilman. All right, I think that that's it. We will adjourn the uh public or the workstation.